Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Stratford City Council. We'll begin this afternoon's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Joining me in the council chambers is City Clerk Tachana Defoe, Deputy City Clerk Chris Bantock, and Chief Administrator Officer Joan Thompson. I'll turn the meeting over to the clerk.
Through your worship, are there any declarations of pecuniary interests? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of the Corporation of the City of Stratford dated January 25th, 2021 be adopted as printed.
Moved by Councilor Vazalakos and seconded by Councilor Beatty. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's carried.
Item four is adoption of the addendum, and there was an addendum that was circulated electronically earlier today. And there is the motion that the addendum to the regular agenda of council and standing committees dated February 8th to add a receipt of a request to defer item 5.3 to the Planning and Heritage Committee addendum and to receive correspondence relating to item 5.1 on the Infrastructure Transportation and Safety Committee addendum.
Moving it then to adoption, Councilor Bunton, Councilor Ingram, seconding, discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? Post fin. That's carried.
Item five is report of the Committee of the Whole in Camera Session, and item 5.1 is from the January 11th, 2021 session, where an appointment of a councillor representative to the CCO Board of Directors was considered, and there is a staff recommendation that councillor Clifford be appointed to fill the vacant councillor representative position on the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation Board of Directors for the remainder of a four-year term to November 14th, 2022, or until successor is appointed by council.
Moved by Councilor Gaffney, seconded by Councilor Bunton. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Post fin. That's carried.
Item 5.2 is also from the January 11th session, and it's regarding a release of option to purchase for lots 16, 17, and part lot 18 in the Wright Business Park. And there is a staff recommendation that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the release for option to purchase with respect to the lands and premises legally described as all of lots 16 and 17 and part of lot 18 in the city of Stratford County of Perth.
Moved by Councilor Vazalakos, seconded by Councilor Clifford. Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Post fin. That's carried.
And item 5.3, the February 8th Committee of the Whole in Camera Session was canceled, and there are no items to be reported out on. So moving on to item six, hearings of deputations and presentations, there are none scheduled. Item seven is orders of the day, and item 7.1 is a proclamation for Heritage Day, and there is a motion that city council hereby proclaims February 15th, 2021 as Heritage Day in the city of Stratford in celebration of our past and our future, and to inspire Canadians to embrace, explore, and enjoy our enduring heritage.
Moved by Councilor Ingram, seconded by Councilor Gaffney. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Post fin. That's carried.
Item 7.2 is a resolution regarding the city of Stratford, display advertising for notices and non-statutory ads contract. And there is a staff recommendation that the city enter into a three-year agreement effective March 1st with the Beacon Herald, the Division of Post Media Inc., to continue to provide display advertising for notices and non-statutory ads under the same terms and conditions of the agreement entered into in 2016, that an option to renew the agreement for two 12-month periods be included, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the necessary contract agreement.
By Councilor Henderson, seconded by Councilor Ingram. Discussion? Councilor Clifford.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, how often is the ad inserted in the paper? And is it in the marketplace, or is it in the ordinary dated day paper?
So through your worship, we circulate both in the marketplace and in the town crier. Often it goes in the Thursday and the Saturday additions unless there are no ads to be placed. And that's weekly. My apologies.
All right. It's moved and seconded. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor? Post fin. That's carried.
Item 7.3 is a resolution regarding the award of RFP 2020-38 for the pay-by-phone municipal parking system, and there is a staff recommendation that the proposal from Hotspot Parking, Inc. for the provision of a pay-by-phone municipal parking system be accepted, and that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to execute all required contract documents.
Moved by Councilor Vazalakos and seconded by Councilor Burbach. Discussion? Councilor Henderson and Councilor Vazalakos.
So I noticed that it says, um, Hotspot is able to provide these items at no cost as they generate revenue through a 20-cent convenient fee. Is that normal in all the quotes that we got, that they charge people 20 cents? And also that 20 cents is you pay for parking, and then if you add more time on, so would that be 40 cents? Like, that'd be two transactions?
Through your worship, so the convenience fee is a standard that most companies provide for when doing the mobile parking. The convenience fee is charged on your first transaction, so to extend parking, the convenience fee is not charged a second time.
Councilor Vazalakos.
I noticed that this company, and threw this app, also offers pay to pay your parking fines as well, and they offer some other services like transit payments and stuff like that. Would these be things that we could integrate later on into our parking system, or are these areas also being offered with this particular iteration of the app?
So in terms of the parking features, staff can certainly explore adding those at some point. In terms of transit or other things outside of parking, staff would have to investigate that further to determine if it's possible to integrate.
Councilor Seven?
Thank you. I just wanted some clarification. I just noted in the report it. I was, it says it'll be $20,000 to implement, but then it also says that the city does not have to pay because of the 20 cent per transaction fee. I just wanted to clarify. Do we pay the 20,000 plus the fee per transaction?
Through your worship, the 20,000 was just money that was set aside when the project was first being undertaken, just because it wasn't sure if there would be costs associated. So that 20,000 can now be used for other things associated with the project that may be extra costs.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Post fin. That's carried.
Item 7.4 is a resolution regarding a resident parking request, and there is a staff recommendation that the request from Mr. Coxon to park with no maximum time loads in the Upper Erie Lot during the provincial stay-at-home order be denied.
Moved by Councilor Clifford, seconded by Councilor Bunton. Discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed if any? That's carried. Thank you.
Item 7.5 is a resolution regarding the household hazardous waste collection contract extension, and there is a staff recommendation that the contract with Fotec Environmental, Inc. for the collection, processing, and recycling of hazardous waste be extended under the same terms and conditions for a one-year term to March 31st, 2022.
Councilor Henderson moving, and it's Councilor Vazalakos, seconding. Discussion? Councilor Gaffney and Councilor Vazalakos.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, why just a one-year extension and not a multi-year one like we do with some of these kinds?
Mr. Delman?
Yeah, through your worship, this is the third year of a three-year contract already. So this was first called back in 2019, so this is the last year of the extension. And as noted, we're waiting on what's happening with the province on producer responsible organizations where it's going back to the producer. So there could be some significant changes in what happens going forward. So we're just trying to get through this year and then see what the new rules are. Hopefully sometime this summer, we'll know what the new rules are going forward and when we call the new contract and what we're left to pick up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Vazalakos.
My question was actually, I think, just answered, and when can we expect some of the producer pay changes to come through? And, you know, whether that gives us enough time to then be looking for what our new contracts are gonna have to look like. But I think if summer, I believe the director indicated probably by summer. Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Post fin. That's carried. Thank you.
Item 7.6 is a resolution regarding maintaining an outdoor rink on the Avon River, and there is a staff recommendation that the city take no action with maintaining an outdoor rink on the Avon River due to safety concerns, and that signage replaced along the riverbanks informing the public of the hazards.
Councilor Gaffney moving, seconded by Councilor Beatty. Discussion? Councilor Burbach, Seven, and Clifford.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks to staff for preparing that for us. I have a question about our arenas. I know that as we speak, things continue to change. I'm just wondering, now that we have this color-coded system in Ontario with different types of openings, are we gonna match up sort of what can happen in our community services areas to match that? So every time we would go into red or whatever zone, we would have a matching set of things that would open or close. Is that something that we're looking at doing?
Mr. St. Louis.
Through the mayor, that would be correct. We try to do our best to match what zone we're in to the availability of our facilities.
Right. So I'm just thinking in anticipation of arenas possibly opening up so people can skate safely in a recreational way again. Thank you.
All right. I believe, Councilor Seven, you're adjourned.
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering, I agree with the recommendation. I was just wondering if staff have looked into a possibility of creating a rink somewhere else, like on Lower Queens or something, for instance, as an alternative, or if that's something that's probably limited by the COVID restrictions anyway right now?
Through the air again, currently, we haven't looked at other locations. And I think a lot of the liability concerns and the safety concerns would be similar in terms of maintaining the facility. So let's say we put an arena on Lower Queens, the city would still have a responsibility as the occupier to maintain at a safe standard, and that would come with a cost, and certainly not budgeted for.
Thank you.
Councilor Clifford.
Thank you, your worship. I was gonna ask, if we put the signs up, and I know I've skated on them myself with my grandson, is this city, if there is an accident and there is a lawsuit, are the signs gonna stop us from having a legal action against the city of Stratford?
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. Through your worship, I will say that it will not stop someone who wishes to take action and make a claim against the city. It is due diligence, and we have consulted with our solicitor as well as our insurer with respect to steps that we need to take to try to limit that. So those are my responses, your worship.
Thank you. Councilor Ingram?
Thank you. So I'm wondering if, given that this is going to be our path moving forward in the future, more than likely, I'm wondering if policy C dot one dot nine should be amended to state that on ice winter activities be prohibited, and that signage should be posted each year following the first snowfall. Just throwing that out there for consideration.
Ms. Thompson? Yep.
Yes, thank you for that. We will take that back and review the policy, and it'll be coming back forward to council at the appropriate time. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Post fin. That's carried. Thank you.
Through your worship, item eight is business for which previous notice has been given, and there's none scheduled. So move on to report to the Standing Committee, and item 9.1 is the report of the Planning and Heritage Committee, and there is one item listed for consideration. That is the planning report zone change application Z03-20 for 533 Romeo Street South.
Over. Councilor Burbach, seconded. Councilor Ingram, discussion. Not all those in favor? Opposed if any. That's carried.
Item 10 is notice of intent, and item 10.1 is notice of a public meeting under the Planning Act. And as noted on the agenda, Stratford City Council will hold a public meeting under the Planning Act on Tuesday, February 23rd at 3:00 PM to hear all interested persons with respect to official plan amendment 001-21, draft plan of subdivision application 31T21-001, and zone change application Z0121 regarding 4117 Perth Line 36 for part lots 3 and 4 concession 2 in the city of Stratford. And for those persons wishing to participate orally at the public meeting, please contact the city clerk no later than 10:00 AM on Tuesday, February 23rd.
Thank you.
Item 11 is reading up the bylaws, and there are seven bylaws listed for consideration as follows. Item 11.1 is an amendment agreement with Upper Thames River Conservation Authority regarding source protection enforcement. Item 11.2 is an amendment agreement with Upper Thames River Conservation Authority regarding joint risk management services. Item 11.3 is an appointment to the CCO Board of Directors. Item 11.4 is to amend zoning bylaw Z01-2000 with respect to 533 Romeo Streets South. Item 11.5 is award of the pay-by-phone municipal parking system request for a proposal. Item 11.6 is to appoint a manager of financial services and acting treasurer for the corporation. And item 11.7 is that release from option to purchase, and these bylaws could be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Over to take them collectively, Councilor Beatty and Councilor Burbach. Before we, oh, Councilor, I was gonna ask Ms. Thompson to tell us a little bit about the new manager of financial services before we go forward. So, Ms. Thompson?
Yes. Thank you, your worship. So it is my pleasure to announce that Spencer Steckley is being recommended for the position of manager of financial services in the city of Stratford. Mr. Steckley has 10 years with an accounting firm, including municipal auditor experience, and he is both a CPA and a CA and holds those designations. We're quite pleased to welcome him to the city of Stratford team. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Thompson. Councilor Henderson, did you have a question?
I just wanted to ask who it was. Thank you very much.
So we're gonna call the question and take them collectively. All those in favor? Post fin. That's unanimous. We'll go to first and second reading, and bylaws 11, 1 through 7. Councilor Seven and Councilor Vazalakos, discussion. Seeing none. All in favor? Post fin. That's carried. Third and final reading, Councilor Gaffney and Councilor Henderson, bylaws 11, 1 through 7. All those in favor? Post fin. That's carried. Thank you.
Item 12 is a consent agenda, and are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Seeing none, we'll go to new business. And under new business, I will acknowledge that for those watching, the city is aware that the Canadian flag atop City Hall has been torn, but the mechanism for the flag to be lowered has become frozen in the last, in the last week, and staff have to be careful out on that roof. So they will monitor it. Whenever possible, they will take that flag down as soon as possible, but wanted the public to be aware that we are aware of that flag situation. Is there anything else under new business? Councilor Burbach?
Thank you. Yeah, I did have a question. Actually, it's sort of stemming from the consent agenda. There was an item on there about the community's safety well-being plan, and I'm just curious as to how Stratford's plan is coming along and when we might expect an update.
Through you, your worship, we have finished editing the first draft with the consultants, and we're hoping that it will be completed by the end of February.
That's great. Thank you.
Anything else? If not, a motion to recess to reconvene in Planning and Heritage Committee meeting? Moved by Councilor Vazalakos and Councilor Bunton. All those in favor? Post fin. That's carried. And we'll now reconvene in Planning and Heritage. Don't turn it over to the chair.
Thank you very much, your worship. I'd like to call the order the Planning and Heritage Committee. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interests? Seeing none. Item three, subcommittee minutes are there from January the 28th. Item four is delegations, and there are none scheduled. Item five, report of the manager of planning. And on item 5.1, planning report, plan of subdivision 31T15-00 and the address of 576 Alone Ave. And I'm going to ask Ms. Bridge to make a presentation on behalf of staff.
Thanks, Chair Ritzma. So what you have before you this afternoon is a proposed modification to a plan of subdivision on for 576 Alone Avenue. So the plan of subdivision was initially draft approved on June 26, 2017. Since that time, the developer has submitted a minor variance for one of the multiple residential blocks on the subdivision. The purpose of that minor variance was to change some of the minimum lot areas for the proposed townhouse lots that would be created. So as a result of that minor variance application, the developer is now seeking a modification to the plan of subdivision. The modifications include the reconfiguration of block 108 to include an additional 18 street townhouse lots, the reconfiguration of the approved street townhouse blocks into lots, and then the renumbering of the lots and blocks in the plan of subdivision to reflect these changes, as well as the introduction of phasing into the draft plan.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge. Any questions for the manager of planning? Councilor Ingram?
Thank you. Did staff receive any comments through the Committee of Adjustment Process or through this process from the existing single detached residential property owners in the area?
Through the chair, on the proposed modification, we have not received any public comments. I would have to go back on the minor variance and double-check. I believe Mr. Bannon is on the line as well. I don't know if Mr. Bannon has any recollection of any public comments received through the minor variance process.
Thank you. It was a while ago that was presented to the Committee of Adjustment, but I don't recall having any comments come through from the public in relation to that file.
Thank you.
Councilor Clifford? Can you unmute?
I will move the recommendation.
Thank you, Councilor Clifford, a seconder for that motion. Thank you, Councilor Ingram. Any further discussion with regards to the motion regarding property 576 Alone Ave? Seeing none. I will call the question. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. And that is carried. Moving on to item 5.2, zone change application Z05-20 with the address of 1041 Erie Street. And Mr. Bannon, are you on the line to give us an update, staff update on this motion?
Sorry, I am online, and I was just trying to share my screen in order to do a presentation. But I don't think it's allowing me to do so. So what I can do is I can kind of go through things. I think council was giving a copy of the PowerPoint. If not, we can give that to them afterwards. The application is being proposed to change the zone from a prime industrial I1-1 zone to a special zone to permit a restaurant with a drive-through to recognize existing minimum gross floor area for the main building and to recognize existing setbacks from Erie Street to the building and to the canopy. Thank you. We do have a development.
Thank you very much.
The subject plans are located on the west side of Embro Road, south of Packham Avenue. I'm just having trouble with my screen. See, sharing here. Okay, I don't think that my screen's being shared. It must be the city clerk's screen, so I'm sure she can follow through. They have an approximate area of 1.46 hectares and a lot frontage of 86 meters. The requested zone would allow for a restaurant with a drive-through as an additional permitted use. Full municipal services are available to the lands, and proposed additional use is not expected to have a negative impact on the surrounding industrial operations. The proposed restaurant use is intended to be ancillary to the permitted industrial uses on the property. The city of Stratford recently completed an annexation of land to allow the city to improve its competitive position in attracting new industrial development. The city would have concerns with the conversion of any vacant industrial employment lands to non-employment uses. In this case, the rezoning is intended on existing I1-1 zone lands, which have frontage on Erie Street, and which represent only a portion of the subject lands. The land to be rezoned represents a property that is similar in size to other parcels that have also been rezoned to allow restaurant uses along the site of Erie Street between the city boundary and Lauren Avenue. The city's official plan permits the proposed use, as it would not preempt ultimate development of lands for industrial purposes. The proposed use can be considered to support the future industrial uses that could be developed on the remainder of the subject lands and the surrounding industrial lands. Staff are of the opinion that the use is in conformity with the official plan. The subject lands are currently zoned I1-1. The applicant's request zoning, which recognizes the existing building area and setbacks to the building and canopy. Recognizing those setbacks would allow for any future repairs or reconstruction to take place on the existing building, and also allows for a building addition to maintain a uniform building line with the front lot line. Where a lot has split zoning, which is the case of the subject lands, each portion of the lot shall be considered to be a separate lot for the purposes of the zoning bylaw. Existing area zoned I1-1 has an area of 4,600 square meters, and the existing building is 188 square meters in size. Applicant has requested that the minimum gross floor area of the main building is set at 385 square meters, which represents a small addition to that building. The new regulation will bring the building size into closer conformity with intentions of the prime industrial I1 zone. The existing use zoning currently permits commercial uses that include a car wash and a gas bar. The area to be rezoned is currently being used for commercial activities, and the restaurant permission would not detract from the area for industrial purposes, and it does not conflict with existing or potential future industrial uses. We have not received any concerns from the agency circulation, and we have not received any comments from the public circulation either. This zoning bylaw amendment is consistent with the provincial policy statement. It's in conformity with the official plan provisions and the intent of the zoning bylaw. It's consistent with the city's strategic priorities and represents good planning, and we're recommending this application. I'm available to answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Any questions for Mr. Bannon? Councilor Ingram?
Not a question, but I'll move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. A seconder for that. Councilor Vazalakos, any further questions? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? And that's unanimous. 5.3, zone change application Z4-20 with regards to the address of 3797 Downey Road 112. And in your addendum today, there was a request for a deferral of this particular application. Mr. Bannon, do you want to give any background with regards to that deferral?
Certainly, I can give a little bit of background. So the applicant has asked that we defer the application to allow them time to address some of the engineering and planning concerns, which were just recently brought to light for the applicant. They have requested a removal of the restaurant use, which alleviates some of planning concerns, but we are still looking at some of the other provisions that they are requesting. And we want to be able to provide a full report back to Planning and Heritage Committee with a recommendation. So the applicant has requested that we defer the application for two weeks to bring it forward at the next Planning and Heritage meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Councilor Burbach, and then Councilor Ingram.
I'll move the deferral.
Thank you. And a seconder, Councilor Ingram. All in favor? And that's deferred, I believe, to February the 22nd. Item number six is information of the committee, and there is a 6.1 project. Item number six is information of the committee, and there is a 6.1 project update is attached. And if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilor Clifford, seconded by Councilor Burbak, all in favor? Thank you, and we're adjourned.
We'll now turn the meeting over to Councilor Gaffney to chair finance.
Like your worship, I'll call this meeting of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee to order. Item two, disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none. Item three, subcommittee minutes are attached to the agenda. Item four, delegations, none scheduled. Item five, report of the Director of Corporate Services, 5.1, consideration of Stratford City Center Business Improvement Area 2021 Budget. Who's gonna, who's gonna take care of that? I've got moved by Councilor Bunting and seconded by Councilor Clifford. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry. Item six, adjournment. Moved by Councilor BD, seconded by Councilor Henderson, all those in favor? Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
This time, I'll turn it over to Councilor Vazalacos to chair the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee.
Thank you. I'll call the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee to order. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three is the subcommittee minutes there for you to have a look at. Item number four is delegations, and we have none scheduled. And then we have item number five, which is report of the Director of Infrastructure and Development Services. We did have an addenda item, so I guess we'll call it 5.1, which is a motion to receive the correspondence. I'm just going to pull this out just a second. The motion that the letter from Kirk Ryle dated February 5th, 2021 regarding the proposed closure of TJ Dolan Drive be received for information. Moved by Councilor Gaffney, seconded by Councilor Ingram. Any questions? Seeing none, oh, Councilor Henderson, go ahead.
So I was wondering, like, there was three parts to the motion. Is there a reason why the first section still can't be taken, and the other two could come back at another meeting?
Right now, all we're dealing with is the correspondence from Mr. Ryle, and then we can move on to that part afterwards.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood. Okay.
Yeah, so right now, it's the addenda item of receiving the correspondence. So are there any questions specific to the correspondence? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. And now we'll move on to the proposed closure of TJ Dolan Drive from St. Vincent Street South to St. David Street. And Mr. Dolovic, did you want to maybe go over, there was a report in the media after subcommittee, and there was some confusion in the public as to what is being proposed. So if you could briefly go over, that would probably be helpful.
Yeah, through the chair, just for some clarification. We did hold a public meeting for the section of TJ Dolan between St. Vincent Street South and St. David Street. So the first motion in the report is to proceed with that closure, and the second motion is for staff to come back with a bylaw to close that. So so that was based on public input. At the same time, we will be doing design drawings for that section. There will be a public meeting. We'll be inviting the public to look at that design. We've just done a virtual meeting, so that's all of what will happen there. And there'll be a lot of, there were some other questions with respect to that that we'll be answering as part of that. Now, the last motion in the report has to deal with the next section of TJ Dolan. And what we're asking for is to proceed with a public notice to have a public meeting with respect to potentially closing that section of TJ Dolan between St. David and Center Street. And then invite the public for comments and any concerns that may have. And we've already received some concerns from a couple of members of the public. So just want to clarify, we're not closing that section between TJ Dolan between St. David Street and Center Street. That's not being done at this time. We were just asking for council's permission to go ahead to do the public notice, have the public meeting to seek input, and then have a follow-up report based on that public meeting for council's consideration at a future date.
Councilor Gaffney had a question?
I'll move the staff recommendation out of adjourn.
Okay, and is that, Councilor Burbak, seconding, and a question from Councilor Ingram?
Thank you. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the third part of that motion so that it says, and that staff proceed to give public notice of a public meeting regarding council considering a bylaw to permanently close. I think that just kind of clarifies it a little bit more for the public.
Agreement from the mover and seconder? Perfect, thank you. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. And then item number six is for information of the committee, and item number seven is motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor Burbak, seconded by Councilor Henderson, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Council reconvene, and I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Through you, your worship. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest made at standing committee and to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Seeing none.
Item 15.2 is the committee report, and item 15.2.1 is from the Planning and Heritage Committee. And that was item 5.1, the planning report regarding the plan of subdivision for 31T15-001 for 576 Alone Ave.
By Councilor Ritzma, seconded by Councilor Ingram, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry.
And item 15.2.2 is from the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee, and that would be to adopt item 5.1 as amended at the meeting.
Move by Councilor Henderson, seconded by Councilor Burbak, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry.
Through you, your worship. But as my understanding, the final item listed for consideration is the confirmatory bylaw.
Moving the confirmatory bylaw, Councilor Bunting and Councilor Burbak. All those in favor? Thank you. Third and final reading, Councilor Gaffney and Councilor BD. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry. And a motion to adjourn this afternoon is Councilor Vazalacos and Councilor Seven. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Thank you.